...this meeting, before we get begin, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have the consent agenda, acceptance minutes of April 26th, 27th, May 3rd, and May 4th.
So move this, Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up, we have the Town Administrator's report.
In the interest of climate control, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to waive that and let the room clear out a little bit, we could continue on.
Certainly, we'll move that after the public hearing.
Sure.
New business, Attorney Adamopolis, 40 Hall Road, retail cannabis license, community outreach, selectmen vote to take any action relative thereto. Good evening, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having us again. This is just, I just want to kind of explain the project that we're proposing. I don't think there's going to be a need for a vote today. I am here with Jen Angelovich. We are proposing to bring an adult retail cannabis shop to 40 Hall Road, which is currently Al's Auto Store. It is zoned industrial 130, so it's properly zoned under town meeting. We did enter into an LOI to rent out that space from the current proprietor. We have sent the information over to the Webster Times to hold our community outreach meeting on June 9th of 2020 at 6:00 PM. We had initially thought we were trying to do it here, but we did speak to Joe Velodico. We've done some at 35 Chase Ave before, we know the space is there depending on the size of the crowd, so he's graciously allowed us to utilize the old Draper side to hold this meeting. Butters letters are going out tomorrow. There is approximately, I believe, 12 or 13 of Butters that will be getting notices. The Town of Dudley has two adult retail licenses under the town meeting vote to give out. As you know, one is going to DMA Holdings down Chase Ave. And ultimately, John Angelovich, Jen Angelovich and their father have, once again, entered into LOI for 40 Hall Road. We're proposing to potentially enter into a host community agreement with the town following the community outreach meeting. My understanding is that in June, your meetings are held on June 7th and the 21st. I would leave it up to the board's discretion of when you would like us to come back to potentially propose the community outreach me, I mean, the host agreement. I'm assuming it's going to be very, very similar to the ones that you've already seen with the 3% impact fee. It is a retail store, so you also get the 3% additional sales tax on top of that, so at least 6% comes back to the town. Besides that, we're here to answer any questions. We are proposing it as Jenna will be the head of the operation, so it would be a female-run business here in the town. And that's something that the CCC really is pushing for, is for more diversity among the applicants coming in, so we do think that should be a strong, she's bringing a lot of qualities that can be beneficial to a retail store. I can answer any questions that the board has at this point.
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Counsel, for coming in again. How does that affect the existing business? Is it going to be a shared space? Is it large enough to have two businesses?
So my understanding is that he, the current proprietor, will move most of his operations to the current garage and allow for a build-out to occur in the little shop. There may be an expansion that we'd have to go to the planning board with to get approvals. We are also talking to the business behind to try to rent out some additional parking spots so that we can adequately handle any sort of traffic that comes in. I believe the goal of the proprietor, after we approached him, was that he ultimately would be moving the repair shop to another location and in town, and he would just rent out this with an option to purchase, I believe, three or five years from now. So you wouldn't be losing the business, I believe, it'd be moving somewhere else in town. He's just been gracious enough to allow us to potentially rent it out from him for this use. As you know, it's only the industrial 130 areas and the mill overlay. We have been looking for several months to find another area that would potentially be able to be utilized. Most of the businesses and buildings that we saw wouldn't have been really appropriate or really good for traffic. The big selling point for this is that the location is already on a road that handles traffic on a daily basis. It's on a corner lot, so it really would just be that main road going towards Connecticut rather than any of the side roads on Hall Road, really would be that major road. So we think it's a good location, we think it could handle any sort of uptick. We obviously have to do a traffic study to present to the planning board moving forward, so that would all be documented to make sure that there would be no sort of issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Just a comment, I'd suggest doing the traffic study. I direct traffic at U-Tag twice a year for the Boy Scout Yard Sale, and that intersection's a disaster. A lot of cars are going out towards Main Street, it's rough. Would Chief go? We should divert traffic back in towards Nichols.
So we 100% have to do a traffic study for the planning board, and then, similar to, you know, I know that when we did the one Chase Ave, this is a different business, they had asked us to put in stop signs on certain areas just to control the traffic, so we would obviously take any recommendations on the traffic study, bring them back to the town to see if we could implement those to handle any sort of uptick. You know, this is, we just got the LOI done, so we really haven't drawn out the traffic flow going in, but that is something that we would present to both the board, the planning board, and when we sit down with the chief.
Mr. Marson.
And parking will be as is right now?
So I believe there's 11 spots in the parking lot as of right now, and we are already in discussions with the business behind, which I believe is Universal Tag, to try to rent out some of the parking spots that are about the back of the building, so that could get us potentially another about 15 parking spots, so that would give us around 25 or 30 spots. I can just say that of the traffic studies that I've done for Webster, Dudley, and Southbridge, usually what they say for the peak hour of traffic is that you need 11 spots for turnover, so 25 to 30 would at least cover what they've been seeing in the ones in Worcester and the ones in Millbury.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't want to belabor the point, but I agree with Mr. Johnson. I think the planning board will probably require an A.S.I.P. plan review, which would include that traffic component. It is a very, very busy intersection, and it's the site of a lot of minor and major fender benders.
And it's also a state road, right, west, you know, at that point where it hits that, so add some time to the study.
100%. I know that, I believe that the company that we use, I can't remember where they are off the top of my head, I know the planning board was very happy when we had utilized them the first time. They do it over a three-week period, and they stagger the days so they can really see, and the good thing is that with the COVID restrictions coming off, we'll at least be able to get a better idea of what the traffic is without having to do, I think they usually do like a 30% uptick of what they've seen on the traffic study. I'm assuming they'll still do an uptick, but they'll probably have a better idea of how COVID has, with the restrictions coming off, what traffic looks like, so we can really get a better gauge.
What more? With more and more of these retail places opening up around the towns, I mean, do people remember the big rush to go there? Are these places still seeing that at the beginning?
So what I can tell you is normally your biggest traffic period is the first two weekends, because you're new. So people in the area find out about you, and they want to go and see what your store looks like. Besides that, what the traffic studies and what the data has told us is that about 75 to 80% of your users are people that are on that road anyways, and they're actually stopping on their way, you know, to somewhere else that they're going to or on their way back from work, so it's not a diversion effect anymore, people are just going, and that's their main stopping point, they just have it built into a normal part of their day, usually after they do everything else. The good thing with that, even Hall Road, which is more of a side street, there is good traffic that normally passes on that road because of the golf course and Nichols going down that way, so we know at least that road can hold some of that traffic, but the traffic study is always a key component, and it's one of the biggest things that we have to always show to the planning boards, because they don't want any sort of lockdown. I can just tell you that Lester and, you know, North Adams, I believe, were the ones that, the first two, and they shut down the town for months and months at an end. That's not happening anymore, it's really those first two weekends, and then it's just normal flow. Webster's has theirs at the, it's been at Kmart Plaza now for about a month and a half. It's been busy according to town administration, but they've had no issues on Worcester Road up there. Curaleef is on Main Street in Oxford, they've had no issues, they had two parking lots that they had to propose, and they're not even really utilizing one of them. So you get a lot of turnover now in the parking spots that are there rather than people sitting around and waiting.
Okay, no, thanks.
Just one thing, do you anticipate any pushback from the Cannabis Control Commission considering the courthouse would be right across the street?
It's not one of the items that they've ever highlighted. Their things are anything that would be geared towards children. So they're looking at schools, parks, daycares, dance halls, and within that 300 yards, there's nothing. We actually went out to about 500 feet to make sure there was nothing in there, but I mean, these have been opening up in cities next to federal buildings. I do have to give the clerk's office one of the Butters letters, so that will be going to them tomorrow, but I would just say, because I'm in Dudley District Court almost on a daily basis, that the individuals that would normally be attending Dudley District Court for different matters are probably priced out from attending the, going to the store. The price point's just, it's pretty high, that it really is those white and blue collar workers that can, you know, really enter in there, and the security's going to have to be presented to the chief. Once again, just for everyone's information, the ID gets checked twice to make sure that we know who's coming at the point of entry at a security checkpoint and at the point of sale.
Good point, courthouse, think of that. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, could, what you're thinking about two dates, June 7th and the 21st?
Those are your next, those are your two June meetings. We're holding the community outreach meeting on the 9th. I'm not sure if the board would be willing to have us present the host community agreement on the 7th with the stipulation that we, you know, reach out following the community outreach meeting to say if there's any issues, or if you'd like us to hold on to the 21st. It's really up to the board's discretion, we follow your direction.
So we'll be reorganizing on the 21st, and there's some other things on our agenda that, of the two dates, the 7th would be my preference.
Do we already have a public hearing on the 7th for Dudley Plaza? Or is that just information?
Is that on the show?
I haven't received them.
Just informational?
It's probably informational. They're going to come in and kind of just go over their plan, so. I think the 7th is a better date, I think the last host community agreement, we received it, and then they had the host, they had the community outreach program the following week, didn't present a problem.
I can get you the draft well ahead of time so that you can present to council and have them review everything.
Thoughts?
I think that's good.
Thank you.
Last thing, thoughts?
Yeah, that's fine. 7th, do we need a motion for that, or are we?
We can just schedule it.
We can just schedule it, then.
Sounds good to me, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Anyone else? We're good?
Thank you very much, Mr. Counsel.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mass DEP Highway Superintendent Michelle Jervis awarded Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant, vote to implement a pay smart program for mattress recycling.
I promised Michelle that the highway superintendent would take the public, the public brain of this, so.
I'm sorry?
I said I promised Michelle that you would take the explanation part of this.
Mattress recycling.
So basically, there's a grant that Michelle actually was capable of securing for the town. There's a portion of the money that pays for the container, and then there's a portion of the money that actually pays for the disposal of mattresses, so the board needs to basically take action, I believe, to recognize the, or receive the grant, and then there's a couple of other housekeeping things that we need to do and show them the plan that we have in place. Basically, it's a pay-as-you-throw plan that we're using right now, $20, $25, and $30 respectively for, you know, twin, twin full-sizeer, or fuller, queen and king-size mattress, and then that goes back to the DEP, comes back, is fully executed, and then we can implement the plan and start to, start to receive the funds as a reimbursement cost incurred.
Is it still people who are permit holders that can use?
So it's still, it would still be the same process, same pay-as-you-throw, we would charge the same fees, would be permit holders and along the lines of that as well, if you'd like me to cover it at the same time.
It would, and it would offset the cost of disposal and the mattresses that we pick up off the side of the road that obviously no one pays for, it would help offset those incidental costs.
Which is a pretty routine practice.
It's a pretty routine practice, so.
So, Mr. Chair, the answer was permit holders only, or is it open to all residents? $25?
Permit holders only, but I'm sure we could apply this towards a cleanup day or a birthday or something like that as well, help offset those costs.
There is an opportunity to have sponsor events where, you know, we would have a collection day, or something similar to like the year of the type of program where we, there's a, there's a specific vendor that, from Warwick, Rhode Island, that actually supplies the container that we're obligated to contract with for the services. It was funny, Mr. Chair, I noticed that, it's a mattress recycling grant through the state, and somebody from Rhode Island is going to be providing.
There used to be, there used to be an outfit somewhere on Metro West that they employed, they're not, they're not around anymore, but they employed some sort of disadvantaged population to take them apart and separate the metal and.
So I'm sure there's some type of competitive grant or competitive contract agreement that they have to agree to, to be chosen as the vendor, so we're obligated to use them. Along those same lines, too, the stickers for the yard waste and recycling center are coming up too on July 1st, so we'll be having a couple of events on Wednesday and Saturday, which are the typical collection dates for, the typical, typical days for the recycling center, so 8:00 AM to noon on Wednesday, the 16th, and, I'm sorry, I have the dates right here, but it's the 16th and 23rd, 8:00 AM to noon, which is both Wednesdays, and then the 19th and 26th, same thing, 8:00 AM to noon, we'd have sticks available for sale. They would be the same price that they are now, they'd be available to the residents, they'd purchase the stick as the, and then they'd be applied to the windshield of the vehicles, and then after those dates, residents would have to come into the treasurer's office and receive them from the treasurer, so the, there is an amendment to the, the senior, the senior throw would be adjusted to four, four 13-gallon bags rather than two 13-gallon bags for the same price.
Or two 30s.
Or two 30-gallon, two 30-gallon.
We were able to make that adjustment based on a couple of operational adjustments we made over the course of the last year, which was to employ two part-time employees, eliminate as a full-time position, reduce the, and reduce the days, so we're passing that savings on to the permit holder.
I noticed, the two employees we have, it's run quite orderly now.
Things are working out very well.
Very well.
They're doing a really good job.
Very well. Any, anyone have any, do you need a vote from us to accept this, or do we just take?
I think, I think we'd be looking for a vote to.
To authorize the chair to sign, is there a little confirmation?
Authorize the acceptance of the grant.
Yeah.
And then that, again, that gets returned with a couple of other housekeeping things on their checklist that we have to return to them, just enumerating the process that we use and. Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the grant and authorize U.S. Chair to sign on behalf of the town?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, question, I always have to ask when we get grants, it's one of the things I do, is any strings attached at all, Jeff, like after we do this, or this is?
The only string attached is the, we're compelled to use the vendor that they've, that they've given us the contract with.
That's good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add that comment also, I know we kind of glossed it over in the beginning, but kudos to Michelle for.
Absolutely.
Finding this, or doing it, getting it all in order and getting it out there for us. I think the total value of the grant is just short of $18,000 collectively, so it's a, it's a good score.
That's great. That's great.
Thank you, Michelle.
Doing more with less, that's what we do, thanks, Michelle.
Okay, motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Michelle.
Next, we have the town clerk, vote to sign election warrant for June 14th, 2021.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept and approve the Town of Dudley Annual Town Election Commonwealth of Massachusetts warrant that's presented tonight.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Just one of these, Michelle?
Next up, we have treasurer-collector, selectmen vote to approve bond in the amount of 1.9 million for water expenditures and update health insurance policy manual.
Good evening, I bring you compliance.
You better start now.
So part of the package should be a vote. We'd like the clerk of the Board of Selectmen to go through, sort of read it into the record, and we need a, we need a signature.
You think that was just ceremonial, huh?
Oh, no, 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 you'll, we've got 30 signatures.
Which one was it? This thing?
It's important, yes, it's, it's.
What are we reading into the record for us, Rich?
Vote of the Board of Selectmen, aye, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dudley, Massachusetts, the town, certify that, and the voted of, and while we're reading through it, it's a $1.9 million obligation, there was a premium attached to it. So instead of borrowing $1.9 million and having an unassigned dollar amount floating out, we'd be paying interest on in year one, we've reduced the total amount borrowed, so we almost get an instant credit. There's an unassigned dollar amount of a few thousand dollars which didn't fit nicely into the reallocation of the debt, so that's going to be a few dollars that we'll use for a similar life project this year, so we're not going to have anything hanging out there, so neat and complete, the $1.9 million with a million, excuse me, $105,000 less issuance costs turns into $1795, and we'll go through, the true interest cost is, it's competitive, you see the last couple of years there, we have, we're under three, so it's better than the mortgage on your house.
Rich, through the chair, do you have the, I have the clerk of the board, because I don't seem to have it.
Your motion? Oh, he has it.
Yes, we'd like that.
Yeah, thank you.
You also notice one of the documents on the very top has lock, lord, they are bond counsel. So earlier in this process, you were asked for copies of meeting minute votes, capital improvement acceptance, so on and so forth. Brenda's the lead attorney and really has sort of guided us through everything. Part of this is going to include the adoption of some new continuing disclosure. So from the last time we borrowed a significant amount of money, which would have been your fire station, to this issuance, there have been a few things that have changed.
Annual reports.
Right. So, so at the end of the day, summarize it in a sentence or two, any material changes in the town for the bad need to be recognized. Anytime you have lease agreements which don't have accusative number assigned to them, which would be a legal obligation that wouldn't be available to someone who's looking up general debt obligations in the market, also the State House note program shows up under that, but if you were investing in something from the Commonwealth, you'd look, you'd look to that office just because it's pretty well centralized. The idea is to make sure that whatever the Town of Dudley is doing, operating as a municipality in the Commonwealth, is easily identifiable and available to anyone who wants to invest in any of these bonds. People down the street aren't buying these, TD Bank, Oppenheimer, those are the guys who are buying our locals. I'm getting, I'm getting calls from 508-781-617401s on the local things. This is a national bid, there was, is it listed on there, Baird Company?
Robert W. Baird and Company.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
So just read as is?
Read as, and we, the idea is we'd want it reflected in the minutes, if there were any questions, I think now would be the time. Material changes, you know, we get, we get sued for $25 million because of some inadequacy, 100% the town's fault, we'd need to report, we go through and do A, B, or C. I, I don't see this as much of, as much as anything, we're doing our best to be transparent on things, and this is just another step of compliance. Annually, we put in the continuing disclosure, think of when Stevens, Lennon, or Ethan Allen closed, you'd want to report something like that, because that's a material change for your top 10 taxpayers, that would, that would move the needle a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, Rich, who's, who's responsible from the town side for the reporting?
Yep, I don't have a problem sleeping at night, I get to read all of these things. So the treasurer's office, the UFASI, UniBank Fiscal Advisory Services Incorporated, is my own town council, it would be that, it would be, they would be the arm that would go through and make sure that we had all of the filings done, but the material changes are up to me to report.
And is it an annual, is it an immediate report, or is it an annual report?
It's an annual report or as something comes, comes across. There's a debrief before and after every town meeting with Lynn.
Okay.
From UniBank. If I have a question for something, I send that email off.
Well, that's good.
Mr. Marson.
So, Rich, and this, handled by your office, so it mentions a compliance officer?
It would be me.
Okay.
Or fill in treasurer.
I am delighted to hear that.
Well, the reason I, well, we have the whole chief information officer thing I was thinking of, and I didn't know if they all have to, it just adds another layer.
I can't imagine anything would be independent of this, there's always a copy of the audit and the management letter going out to UniBank.
Okay, thanks.
Your Honor, Your Honor.
So you want me to read the first paragraph, not three pages?
You took my copy, what is it?
Ended to the bailiff.
Oh, you want voted, further voted, further voted, I certify that the votes were taking, taken, so probably you'd want to read all of this out.
I think we moved this to the end, so I can start it through this and private. Does it make sense for me to read this while this?
As presented?
Let a copy be entered into the record?
Yeah, do it that way. Read the first paragraph. What's that, Michelle?
Does he have to read the voted stuff, too?
Yeah, we can do it, we could certainly read it at the end, if you want to keep things rolling.
If you want to keep things going.
Be glad to do it, but I don't want to.
I thought you were looking at me like, let's have the
Will you push it to the end?
How do you say this word? Yeah?
No, I'm not worried about that.
Do you want to push the health, the health insurance policy to the end as well? Is that a long?
Sure.
That's a thick of a package, so. Well, behind his motion comes all of this, I think.
All the signing and what have you.
I'll push it to the end.
So we'll take it up, Mr. Chairman, maybe under Department of Communication, we'll resume.
We'll move you to the end?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You pushing them in?
The health insurance, too?
Yeah, we'll just do it all at once at the end.
All right.
Okay. Next up, we have an on-premise, all liquor license, KJAC Incorporated DBA Upside Food and Drink located at fifty-nine Schofield Ave, Suite Two, Dudley, Mass. Manager Kelly Hay Ryan. This is a public hearing. We'll open that public hearing at seven oh two PM.
Rivers.
I said Rivers, didn't I?
It's Ryan.
Rivers, it says Rivers here.
Yeah, you said Ryan.
Oh, I apologize, Rivers. I apologize.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Attorney Simonelli.
You got to declare it open?
I did.
Seven oh two.
See, I messed up, you messed up, this is great.
Mine was just a question.
Okay, I'm representing the applicant, this is for a flooring license. It's actually, the location is at the old Gaslight location on Schofield Ave. That property is well-suited for this business. It's been licensed over there for, I believe, more than a decade. So the zoning is business fifteen, general business residential. And the applicant's is KJAC Inc., DBA the Upside Food and Drink. The manager is Kelly Rivers, and she has had experience in bartending and waitressing since two thousand, at any rate. They also have another interest in a facility in Oxford. So this, this would be, her husband, who actually also works, Chris Rivers, is an officer of this corporation, and he also works, spends hours, thirty to forty hours a month at the Oxford location. We would suggest that the applicants have the experience, they also have a location that's suitable, and we would respectfully request an approval of this license.
Mr. Sullivan?
To the administrator, then to Michelle, I guess. There was a previous occupant that was working in there, they didn't renew their license, right? They just kind of went away, right?
I got it.
Can I help those, help with something?
Yeah, they did a bunch of work, put a sign up and never opened.
The sign blew away.
They were open.
Oh, yeah.
The sign blew away. We hardly knew ye.
Yeah.
So basically, the same, I recall, we had, we didn't have conditions per se, but like most of the packings in the rear of the building because the convenience store has a certain amount.
And Leoni's.
They have already executed a lease with the landlord, and that's included in your package. That has a contingency on the approval, of course.
So, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
Are we, through the council, and I guess the applicants, are we looking at a pub-type setting, or a more alcohol than food? You're going to try to have like a good, maybe put a kitchen in, right, I understand?
Right, so they will be getting a common Vic.
Common Vic, okay.
Oh, good.
They hope for operating hours to have generally between eleven and one, and eleven AM and one AM. And except for Sundays, they hope to open for brunch earlier at ten AM. But of course, that's subject to whatever the demand supports.
Again, one more, Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
To Michelle again. A few years back, we took the vote about when you could do last call, last serve. That part of the packet that we, didn't we take a vote, like you can't, last call had to be like twelve thirty, no alcohol after like twelve forty-five? Do we include that in the packet, so people know?
Not really.
Okay.
I could.
Yeah, I just want to let the applicants know, that's the gen, twelve thirty, last call, no alcohol after quarter of. Everybody out by one, obviously.
Michelle, is this the entire application?
No, no, it's really thick.
It's like this.
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, we don't have like the Corey stuff and all that.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, oh, wow.
I would assume everything's, if they're here.
That's why it's
Right, everything came back fine if they're here, so I'm sure.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, well, the butters, any, you guys made everybody in the
I have the
Okay.
Do they want to talk a little bit about the business, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, do you want to talk a little bit about your business?
Sure.
I just want, don't mind me, I'm just, I just want to
I heard food, I was like, yeah, that's fair.
Give you a chance to get some free advertising.
Sure.
Hi. Can I take this off, or no?
Yeah.
Okay, I just can't talk with it on, sorry. Well, I feel like I'm mumbling.
You'd be fit up, fit up well with us.
Wait till later when I read that.
Yeah, stick around.
So what would you like to tell us about the business? Does anyone have any questions, or you could just?
Well, we, we are looking to open, hopefully, late summer, all depending. And we'd like to do a kitchen, kind of a sports bar, place for people to meet, friends, old friends, make new friends. Yeah, I mean, we own Days End in Oxford as well. We were never allowed to put food in there, and that's just something that Chris and I have wanted to do for a while, and then COVID hit, so we all, we just sat tight. We, it was sort of a perfect opportunity, unfortunately, for the, for the couple that had to close, but sat empty, and the landlord was wonderful, very eager to help, help us and work with us. And, yeah, so we're just, we're a little nervous, but we're ready.
Right, Mr. Chair, like what type of food? Is this like public food, or?
Yeah, we're going to start off quality over quantity. So we're just going to try to get maybe ten items on the menu, and, because we're a little nervous about getting a cook, you know, it's tough right now and not a lot of people want to work, so we're taking that into consideration and taking baby steps. But, yeah, we're looking for, you know, fried chicken sandwiches, fish and chip on Fridays, and things like that.
I just, don't mind me, I just want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's. There are a couple of boxes, like eleven B, existing management agreements and interest in alcoholic beverages license, it's not checked, yes or no?
Okay.
Is that something that needs to be, and as we go through previously held interest, previous management, there's no, like eleven, eleven B, C, D, E, there's nothing marked? Is that something that we need marked before we can vote on this?
No, because we checked the no at the top, that obviates the rest.
Are you requesting approval to utilize a management company through a management agreement?
And we're not.
You're not? Okay.
Oh, because eleven A says management entity, so it's no.
I'm just, I just saw eleven B, and I thought perhaps that was different from Okay.
Some of that information is repeated in other sections.
Okay, no, I'm good. Any board members have any questions?
That's there.
I'm good.
Want some clothes?
Yeah, I'm just making sure no one's going, and we'll close the Mr. Carmen Yanni? Oh, you're just
He's stretching.
I assume that's what he was doing, but
Looked like he was moving his fingers, right?
No. We'll close the public hearing at seven twelve PM. Chairman will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to grant an on-premise, all alcohol liquor license for KJAC Inc., DBA Upside Food and Drink located at fifty-nine Schofield Ave, Suite Two, Dudley, Mass. Manager Kelly A. Rivers.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Rich has a capoosta recipe.
Yes, he does.
Rich has a capoosta recipe.
Oh, well, we'll do it.
You really, that was kind of a secret.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, welcome.
Next up, we have class two license, ELC LLC Auto Sales, twelve to sixteen West Main Street, owner John Garen. We'll open that public hearing at seven thirteen PM.
Good evening, appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board.
Okay. See what we've done here. While I'm reading, does any board members have any questions? No? Would you like to tell us a little about the business?
Basically, we just purchased our twelve to sixteen West Main Street, which houses our Yeti Shoe Building, little strip mall. It used to be the Antique Shop, the little gray antique shop on the corner by Dunkin' Donuts, and then there was a fourth family behind there. So I sold the property in Webster, and we purchased this as a rehab. The fire department, the building inspector's been pretty instrumental with us going through this because the place is, you know, has needed a lot of work along the way. Initially, we renovated the two left, the two left portions of the, of sixteen to twenty West Main, which was Eddie Shoe, and then there was a hair salon there. We actually renovated the two left sections for another hair salon, and we have the town's approval and everything signed off at that point, but we're just waiting for the state to come in and do their inspections. So that's that area. The fourth family in the back is, you know, needs the most work. Generally, the class two license is going to encompass the front part where all three buildings encompass it, so, and I'd gone back and forth with the building inspector about the parking handicap, because initially I gave him a print that showed two cars for sale out in front and four parking spaces, but his main concern was handicap parking, so we decided to change the layout and make sure there's enough room for handicap parking there, and then if there's any excess cars, they'd be parked in back. So basically, ELC stands for entry level classics, so I mess, you know, mess around with the cheaper older cars, pretty much so we have a site off-site for any work to be done. And again, mostly we sell, we sell them before we even done with them. So it's just kind of a low-key, you know, supplemental business to, you know, help with, you know, pay for the renovations for the building. So right now, we're going for additional financing, and again, this is one step towards that to see what direction we're going to go in. In the back, there was a garage that had fallen in, so we had taken the roof down, and we're looking at either rebuilding that or finishing demolishing it, dependent upon what we'll be able to use the building for. So if the class two goes through, and it's only, Mr. Berlin game said, you know, four to five cars, so I'd just put one car up front for advertising purposes, and anything else we have would be up parked out in back, so, you know, out of sight. And again, we probably will rebuild the garage in back if we're going to house any other cars, they may go in the garage and back, so just a low-key, small, you know, operation.
Mr. Johnson?
Not going to have any cars hanging on the sidewalk in West Main?
No. It's set up now, there's a curb cut already cut in on that area, and there's two parking spaces, they just park whatever. The area for parking for the cars is forty-three by forty-six, and when I had initially wrote this up, I had two cars for sale facing the street, and then four other parking spaces. Again, Mr. Berlin game was more concerned about the handicap accessible, so we changed the parking, so you can see it. And basically, the grade from the parking down to the town sidewalk, the grade's less there than the, than the grade down, you know, across the three buildings as they stand now, so he's just suggested to put the other cars in back if we have them for sale. But again, it's a very low-key operation, and we just, you know, they're usually gone before we even put them out there.
Mr. Sullivan?
Again, when you say park out front for like advertising, you mean you could park in front of the buildings on West Main?
Yeah, the thing is, the buildings, Eddie Shoe and the Antique Shop are, are street front.
Right.
The fourth family is about fifty feet off the road, so that, those three buildings encompass the area that would put the parking. So the curb stop that's cut in, we're just going to level that out, get rid of the grass, and the cars will be up on the lawn, to speak, in a parking area that, that'd be off the street, they wouldn't be in the street, and they're actually going to be ten feet away from the sidewalk will be the first starting of the parking spot.
Okay, thank you.
And just one thing I may add, again, there's a lot of talk back and forth with office space for class two license, because a lot of people have been selling on, you know, online and that type of thing. So another, another aspect we're looking at is a little bit of a design in the Antique Shop to put an actual sales office in with a handicap bathroom, which will take about thirty, thirty-five percent of that space right there. So that's our intent. Again, just one more supplemental income to help dress the place up, you know? Big plans, not a lot of money. No kidding.
So the other two businesses going to remain?
Eddie Shoe is going to stay there. We figure he's kind of a staple in the community, and, you know, we, you know, he's staying there. The new salon is opening, the Antique Shop has left, and there's some issues that we've got to straighten out down in there, and the rest is all residential above. And actually, the fire department have been there, made some suggestions on what we could do to, you know, make things safer for the people upstairs and that type of thing. So as we go along, again, you know, the direction's going to be dictated by certain things like this that happen, and then, you know, the town's been involved from the start, from the get-go, so.
You got to keep Eddie the boo.
I, yeah, I'll tell you, he's seventy years old, and I
I wouldn't know by looking at him.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, yes, we made that decision because he's been there forever, you know, doesn't pay a lot of rent, but we kept his rent the same just because I say, hey, we're next to Eddie Shoe, okay, you know, and so
Eddie the boo.
Yep.
Anything else? Good, Mr. Chair.
I would say a business going in there.
We will close the public hearing at seven seventeen PM.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sullivan?
Make a motion that we grant the request for a class two second-hand vehicle license for ELC LLC located at twelve sixteen West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. for owner John E. Garen.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Aye, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Good luck.
Yep, thanks.
Get me like a nineteen seventy-six Electra or something like that.
Well, I got a seventy-seven Ford pickup, a seventy Maul, and a seventy Toyota Land Cruiser.
Seventy-six Dodge Aspen with a slant sex. I don't want any
If you ever have funny stories of just stopped by, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Take care, good luck.
All those vehicles went out fleet up until about a year ago.
Seeing all red and white expedition out there. Next up, we have the town administrator's report. Mr. Ruda.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this is hopefully going to be an upbeat and the best, the most optimistic report you've received in a year. So just as a reminder, we're reopening the town hall effective May twenty-fourth, which is next Monday, which is the same day as our town meeting. The town hall will reopen from eight to four thirty, Monday through Thursday, and eight to one thirty on Fridays. Currently, officers will have the ability to schedule appointments after hours, and there'll be more information on regular hours after July first, meaning regular evening hours. I just want to have another conversation with the board about that.
Mr. Johnson?
So no after-hours unless it's by appointment until after July first?
Until after July first, well, I just want to have a larger discussion about the Thursday evening thing, because it seemed like it wasn't, we had it before, but it was religiously followed by some departments, but not all, and some couldn't make it happen, some, so maybe we, now's an opportunity to straighten it all out to see which way the town wants to go and see if that's still a logical way to, to use our staff's time on Thursday evenings.
It should be followed pretty religiously because they get It should be followed pretty religiously because they get out early on Fridays because they work late on Thursdays.
Well, maybe we, that's what I wanna-
Right now, it should be following or there should be some kind of allowance.
Right. You're right.
That's all.
But we need to have a larger discussion about whether Thursday evening is the right way to go. There's been, we've had a lot of positive feedback about, for example, the kiosk, like a Saturday morning kiosk with part-timers or maybe a combination of some officers man some. But we don't wanna hold up the reopening just for Thursday night, so we'll move forward with that.
Quick question for the administrator too. Maybe public safety. When I was pulling in tonight, Governor Baker announced he's gonna open up to full indoor capacity at 29th Memorial Day weekend?
You're taking my thunder, Mr. Sullivan.
I'm sorry.
You got two pages of love here and you're just-
Best news ever.
I've been waiting to hear to announce this.
You tend to not say anything.
Wouldn't even recognize by the chair.
Whoa, he's running a coup.
Bloodless coup.
He gets to say a bunch of words tonight and he thinks he's-
So, we can go over, you know, section by section very quickly. Effective May 29th, all industries will be permitted to open with the exception of remaining face covering requirements for public and private transportation systems and facilities housing vulnerable population. All industry restrictions will be lifted and capacity will increase to 100% for all industries. The gathering limit will be rescinded. It's effective May 29th. So, unless we're in the T or in an Uber or something like that, we're good to go.
And Mr. Chair, will the school send out their own separate thing on that?
Yeah, you guys are in it.
Oh, I'm waiting. Daniel ain't over there.
Because I'm not him, I'm talking to him.
Is face covering guidance, we're gonna probably hear so much of it over the next two weeks that I'm not even gonna waste any of this time with it. Governor Baker will end the state of emergency June 15th. The Commonwealth is still under a state of emergency. And the administration will work with legislative and municipal partners during this period in order to manage an orderly transition from emergency measures adopted by executive order and special legislation during the period of state of emergency. Which brings us to our local emergency order, which we're still under. So, without objection from the board, the local emergency that was declared and voted as of 3/1920 that Mr. Sullivan signed as chairman, it's say it would be, remain in effect until further notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the conditions leading to the declaration no longer exist. So, my recommendation is if the state is lifting their order, the conditions no longer exist and we could go ahead and rescind that. And I'm sure the fire chief has the authority to do that, not you guys.
No, but I was gonna, that, it's sitting on my desk in the tray where I've been sitting there since the beginning, but I believe the chairman of the board needs to sign off on it when we declare it no longer.
So, without objection, as I was saying, I will prepare for the chairman of the board to select him to sign at the next meeting, just before the town meeting.
I'll give it to you.
At Chaffington. Huh?
I'll hand it to you.
Okay, you can hand it to me.
We could do it at the town meeting and have a little pomp and circumstance.
Yeah.
Like in the 70s, they burned bras.
Little mask burning. Little mask burning.
K through 12, early education and summer camp guidance. Effective May 18th, guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Early Education and Care will be updated to no longer require masks for outdoor activities like recess and to allow for the sharing of objects in classrooms in both K through 12 and childcare settings. This guidance will remain in effect beyond May 29th. The administration will release updated guidance for summer camps effective May 29th, which will include no longer requiring masks for outdoor activities. So, it looks like everybody's essentially good to go on May 29th, unless you're in a subway train somewhere here in town. And as always, we'll, if there's anything that comes locally from our Board of Health that may seek to modify this somehow, which we have the authority to, we'll take that into consideration. But it's all, from what I can see now, it's full speed ahead with staying in step with the state guidance. And we're actually opening our town hall five days in advance of everything opening up, so. I think we're in good shape.
Any questions for the Town Administrator?
Great update.
Very thorough, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. You guys are on this whole report, so let me thank you.
We just helped you a little bit.
But now you can act on it or no?
Now, we're going to- We've got that. Mr. Carman Yanni, could we do the vote for the bond and the health insurance policy manual before the conference?
Is the end of things?
Yeah, we've got board members and then departmental and then student rep. This is the last of the non-opinionated stuff.
What did you wanna do?
We need to, Mr. Johnson needs to-
I'll read it, Mr. Chairman.
As you wish.
I, the clerk of the board of selectmen of the Town of Dudley, Massachusetts, certified that added meaning of the board held May 17, 2021, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the $1,795,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2021 bonds of the town dated May 27, 2021 to Robert W. Baird and Company, Inc.
Mr. Johnson?
I think you wanna have the vote individually and have that noted in the record. You're signing the attestation that it had occurred.
I thought you were going to read the motion. There is a prepared motion, correct?
There's a section that says voted, so it looks like that could be turned into a motion.
Say I move to.
Okay. I move to a sale of the $1,795,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2021 bonds of the town dated May 27, 2021 to Robert W. Baird and Company, Inc. at the price of $1,946,615.31 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on May 15 of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as listed.
And I so move.
And I so move.
And dutifully, John Marcy raises his hand.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Thank you.
We don't need individual votes. We can-
You didn't get a text on either of them? However you'd like to do it.
I'm just asking. I just wanna do it once. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
So, you want me to do the next one all in one motion? No?
Certainly.
There's 17 of them.
And there's a lot of-
This one, that one, that one, that one, that one.
Further voted?
About as presented, I didn't turn it in the records.
If the four members of the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator are comfortable with it, let the record so indicate.
As presented and into the-
That's your call. You can read it or you can do the as presented. You're the clerk. This is your time.
Is there a benefit either way?
Speed.
I mean, in terms of legality? No.
It's not going to get any cheaper.
Why don't we read it? You got nothing better to do tonight? This is in what position?
Go ahead, sir.
Make a motion that the bonds maturing on May 15, 2036 and May 15, 2041 shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. 2032, $65,000, and then falling years at $60,000, ending in 2036. Term bond due May 15, 2041, at $60,000 a year, 2037 to 2041. I'll do it all as one. Also, that in connection with the marketing is sale of the bonds, the preparation, distribution of notice of sale in preliminary official statement dated May 6, 2021 and final official statement dated May 13, 2021. Each in such form may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. That the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. That the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-212. In such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertakings shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. That we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish and institute federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor, maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and comply with irrelevant securities laws. That any certificates or documents relating to the bonds may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of all manually executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronic signatures. On any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating there to having the same legal effect as original signatures. That each member of the board of selectmen, town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary, convenient, carrying to affect the provisions of the foregoing votes. Further certified that the votes were taken in a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken in a secret ballot, that a notice stayed in place, time, date, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda, including the adoption of the above votes, was filed by the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in the manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 to B, at least 40 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. Prior to the time of the meeting, remain so posted at time of the meeting as to no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of bonds or taken in executive session, all in accordance with GLC 3818 to 25 as amended and as further suspended, supplemented or modified by the executive order of the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, suspending certain provisions of open meeting launch at 3820 dated March 12, 2020.
And I so move.
And I so move.
Thank you.
Say second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Excellent job, Mr. Johnson.
No discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That took one billionth of the time, is reading the town warrant 800 times in a row, so. I think it was worth a read.
We read the town meeting warrant 800 times.
We did.
Yeah, we did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Do you wanna sign that back page and I'll take it with me?
Just the original?
Please. So, thank you. We're all legal, legal. Every time we borrow money, it seems to get a little bit more laborious. I hope to bring you things for the INI, for the SRF loans, and another SRF loan. Plus, I think there's gonna be another bond issue at some point in the next year or two.
Feel like I'm buying a house here.
To the chair, Rich, there's a general obligation bond. Does this have a signature sheet that goes with it?
Take a quick fan through. Does it note the accusative number and identify the-
Clerk.
Clerk. I'm saying.
Carrie.
I'm sorry? Well, in the interest of time, we'll start going through here.
Rich.
We're what?
There.
This is-
That just goes with the packet?
Yep.
All right. It may be out of order. Is that okay?
Long as not, something's not missing.
No, that's what I mean. I wanna make sure I found all the signature pages for them.
Sure. I'm gonna take a quick fan through before everyone is- Everybody is dismissed. So, I thank you. A little bit tedious. What can we do? We need to do it. Got a great rate. Thumbs up. Go to something fun and in- Sir?
I'm looking at something that is quite reminiscent of a tax form.
8038.
Yes. And there is a signature here. Is that your signature that goes on here?
Treasurer signs that. We're making the attestation that this is a public water supply. It's not privately run. No one owns anything other than the town owned and operated.
See many of those.
You only need three, right?
Three what?
Signatures?
No, no. Thank you. Appreciate it. So, as we're finishing up on the signatures, let's go to even more exciting things. One of the tasks of the town treasurer is to review the insurance policy manual. A couple of years ago, we put everything together. There was a mix of everything. There was Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust. There was the old South Central Consortium where we used to buy with Charlton and Bay Path. There's Blue Cross. There were things that had been done. Why? Because that's the way we do it. Mass General Law. And then they had the 2011, they had changed a few things. And then you had the Municipal Modernization Act, I think, had one or two items in there. Anyway, we went through, dissected everything, sorted it out, put it in language. We had a couple of compliance issues. Everybody remembers, we took the vote for surviving spouse coverage. We had always done it, never validated it with a vote. Medicare for retiring spouses, Medicare for retirees. We've put a couple of things into place.
Yeah.
Part of the review is going to be under B, retired employees. We're changing C, retired employees. As it stands right now, when you separate from service and retire, which means you're getting superannuation, you're getting your pension check coming in. You had a town administrator who left two years ago. At that point, you're allowed to continue health insurance. If you didn't have health insurance, none was promised to you at a future date. We're looking to amend that slightly. If you have the benefit now, you're allowed to continue. We had some unique circumstances where you had empty nesters, you had spouses married at the time of retirement, where you had a Town of Dudley employee receiving an individual, and you had a working spouse with their own coverage. What we're looking to do tonight is to allow that to happen where the retiree leaves, preserves the spouse's retirement insurance at the time of their retirement. So, everybody's retiring. So, for example, the town administrator at the age of 55 has an individual plan. His spouse has an individual plan privately or at a place other than the Town of Dudley. The spouse goes through and proves that we have coverage. We sign off, understanding that when the spouse retires, you have one opportunity in which to enroll in Medicare and enroll in the town's insurance coverage. So, you've preserved it for that retirement time. Beyond the retirement time, there's no additional obligation. This works into all of the OPEB valuations. If you leave it wide open without any of this, anybody who's retired can come and go from the insurance. We've narrowed it, kept it within 32B, and we're making it practical so that we have the option of having a- we have the option of having a survi, um, having a spouse go on, potentially a surviving spouse. I don't really think it changes our OPEB valuation much, but it solves the situation which is, which is readily, which, which would not be uncommon. So, we're looking to change the language by adding, if a retiring employee has an actively working spouse with non-town insurance coverage, the retiring employee must sign a form at the time of retirement indicating that the working spouse intends to enroll in the town's insurance program upon his or her own future retirement. I would like to have this sheet added to the appendix. This also means that the working spouse will be responsible to enroll in Medicare, and we wouldn't have to pay the penalty if they didn't.
Any questions? Any thoughts?
Is something, Mr. Chairman, do we have to vote on something?
Yep.
Okay.
Wrote to change the, the language under B, retired employees subsection C, by inserting the underlying text and including the sheet as the appendix. Important reminder, acknowledgement of timely obligation to enroll.
Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
I move we update the health insurance policy manual at the recommendation of the town treasurer collector as written in the attachment.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Wonderful, thank you. Health insurance is doing very well, uh, two percent minus, so we're saving money, just keeping the status quo. Along those lines, this is the time of year where you're going to see a lot of mailings. If you see something that says H C G I T meds, this is legitimate. They go through, um, there is a program for subscribers of the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust whereby maintenance medication can be purchased at a deep discount. So, it's worth reading, this is legitimate. If you have a question, let me know, I'll be happy to read it, not happy to work you through it, um, I spent twenty minutes talking on this, but it is a good thing. Open enrollment is done Friday, so if you want to change anything, now is the time to do it, um. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, board member comments, Mr. Sullivan.
Not too much, Mr. Chair.
Rich.
I know the student rep's going to talk about the schools, but schools are ramping up to full participation with everything. Numbers look great, as we talked about in the administrator's thorough report. The governor is loosening up some restrictions, the feds are loosening up some, but just like we always say, still real, be careful, check on your neighbors, got an elderly or a shut-in, make Dudley a special place that we know it is, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Johnson.
After one of the early discussions today, I, uh, have you ever missed not to bring up the Boy Scout Troop two seventy-three yard sale is on May twenty-ninth on Hall Road, where it's been every year for long as I can remember. Finally getting back to normal, like I said, so we can have one of the better fundraisers for the troop.
Excellent.
They accept donations, Jay, you have to have your own table, does that work?
No, uh, they might still be accepted, because there's a backlog, we collected for a year and a half and canceled two yard sales, we're kind of flush with stuff, but if you follow the Boy Scout Troop two seventy-three on Facebook, they'll, they'll make any notes if they're going to accept anymore.
Sounds like a plethora of things for people to choose from that, like that sort of thing.
Yes, it's bursting at the seams.
Mr. Myersley.
Yeah, just speaking of upcoming events, I just want to remind everybody that Monday, the twenty-fourth, this coming Monday, is our annual town meeting, and I'd hope to see a lot of people there, lots of stuff on the warrant to talk about, very important issues, so come, make your voice heard, be part of the solution. Thank you. And that's at Shepherd Hill at six, at seven P M. on Monday.
I, I'm not going to stop now, if you haven't gotten a vaccine yet with everything opening up, you can still go on the town's website, red banner at the top, many other places have them, it's not too late.
Actually switching, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's switching to a walking model now.
Yeah.
So, even better.
Even better, so, just because things are opening up doesn't mean you can't get a vaccine if you haven't already, so if you want one, go ahead and get one. Departmental Communications, Jeff, do you have anything, or are you good? No obligation.
Oh, just an, just an update, uh, we recently, about a week ago, completed a paving project on Lowell Perryville Road. Today, Rocky Road and Eagle Drive, and then within the next week, we'll be paving New Boston Road.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, there will be, we are assisting the Veterans Agent with getting the memorials together and the, the flags erected over the, over the next couple of days, and getting those, getting those spruced up for Memorial Day, so unfortunately, you know, we, there won't be much of a celebration, some of the veterans, veterans will be visiting those memorials, but, you know, that's, I guess, so, that's about it.
Mr. Chair, just, not, not to Jeff, but Jeff just brought up a good point, I saw the email from the Veterans Officer, they're looking for volunteers that want to take handful of flags, you just, all you do is you go up to the local cemetery, and you look around for veterans' markers, replace the flags, I know my daughter did it a couple of years for student council at Shepherd Hill, they're always looking for help, so if somebody needs a community service project at the school, they usually give you twenty-five or so, you go to Corbin Cemetery, for example, and you just try to find the ones that may have been overlooked. So, anybody wants to do that, contact the Veterans Office, I'm sure Mr. Rogerson will appreciate the help.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
I'll thank Mr. Murray for triggering that.
Yes, well, thank you as well. Mr. Petrinos, do you have anything, sir?
Yes.
I need to know George was here.
Sorry, trap. Ah, he's, he's.
Needs a nap.
Mason Road Project will be starting around the June first, it's going to be on the Mason Road Extension side first, and then let the schools do their thing, and then we're working our way from West Main up to June Street on the final stage of that, so just, you know, we've, we're sorry for the inconveniences, but this will be great to get that project done. Yeah, I did a little of that Mason Road Project, we had a bad main break last night off Mason Road. We had to rebuild a whole intersection on Barrier, I've been living, I know, I want to thank the little guys, we were all in a six-foot deep hole for about, from three o'clock till eleven o'clock last night, eleven thirty, to correct that problem, all the same type of pipe we're replacing on Mason Road. The other thing is, we're going to be doing lead copper sampling, about sixty samples to various residents, day kids and schools, if you get a packet, please follow the instructions on it, this is state required, state mandated, it's not by control, and we'll be doing that for the full week right now, so we appreciate it, nice cooperation.
Thank you, George. Police Chief, Steve, do you have anything?
Just a couple of quick things, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Met today with the, our Drug and Counter Crime Task Force, we got a donation of ten to ten thousand dollars from District Attorney Early, so we're putting that towards some different programs we have out in the area, so we thank him for that, have a media notification going out on that. And also, I got a couple of requests, and I know a few of you are running for reelection and things, but political signs, I guess, are being removed or taken on different places, so we're just telling people to make sure they avoid doing that stuff. We're asking folks if they have locations too, to maybe check with property owners and see if they have cameras and things in those locations, if anything disappears, to review that and see if there's any information for us to, to take that, take any further action. But, just want people to leave them alone, and go about your business, and once things are done, everybody removes them in a prompt fashion, and everybody will be well.
What is, what is the fine for tampering, or the penalty for tampering?
It'll depend, it could either be destruction of property, or, you know, larceny, or anything of that nature, most likely misdemeanor at that point, but, you know, there could be some of the things that could apply with it. But I'm sure a person doesn't want the, the charge and or embarrassment that goes along with it, especially if they're taking signs from, from an opponent, not a, not a good thing.
Agreed. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, real quick to the chief, I know you had, you sent something out to us, chief, there was one, one incident up at the Hill, Nichols, but the rest of the graduation stuff all went off.
Graduation went pretty smooth, yeah, we only had, we had one incident with an individual up there that acted up a little bit too much, and was, they got in a, got in a fight, but I don't even know if, I don't even know if they were actually students at the time, I'd have to, have to look at their status, but, uh, yeah, everything else went, went smooth, they had three different graduations, they had one Friday night for the night school and online folks, they had one Saturday for the main senior class, and they had one Sunday for the class of twenty-twenty that never had it, so it was, the weather cooperated with them and seemed to go pretty smooth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Kocinowski, Dean, do you have anything?
I actually got a few things tonight.
Attaboy.
Well, it's money, so. Last week, Tuesday, the health agent and I did seven residents, seven homebound residents, we went to their house and vaccinated them, so we've had some success with that program. This afternoon, we kind of had a unique call, I don't know if the town administrator mine had heard it, um, we had a roof blown off of a barn out in West Dudley, it was sunny on this end of town, but we did get contacted from a few news agencies, and I spoke to the National Weather Service, we might have actually had a small microburst that was smaller than, you know, half the size of the town, I mean, it was just a little, they don't really know what it was, nobody was hurt, there was just the roof damage. It was very isolated and very small, but the National Weather Service is investigating it in case you hear anything. I, I have perhaps found a donation of a couple thousand dollars for the hazardous waste fund, so maybe we can start up that hazardous waste disposal program that I did a few years back. I'll have more on that in a few weeks, hopefully. The grant that I mentioned a cou, about a month and a half ago for fifteen thousand dollars, we were awarded that grant for firefighter safety equipment, we used that fifteen thousand dollars to purchase new airbags and stabilization jacks. The airbags we replaced were roughly from the mid to late nineties to maybe the early two thousand, so we're replacing those airbags with new airbags, and town has never had a real set of stabilization jacks, which is used in specialty rescue and MVAs to stabilize vehicles, so that will be a nice added piece of equipment that we're able to purchase with this grant, and that's all I have.
Excellent, hope you don't have to use it too often, thank you, chief.
Yep.
Mr. Carminianni, do we have anything else? Anything else? Departmental Communication, asking if you had anything else besides five hundred and twelve pages.
Sure, absolutely, um, you know, timing is everything. So, last Thursday, we printed out all the water and sewer bills, and they're going to get mailed out Wednesday or Thursday, so Monday, when this place opens, um, yeah, will be a wash, so timing is everything.
The treasurer's office, Mr. Chairman, is going to buy coffee and donuts all the way downstairs.
For what?
For the patrons that come in.
Well, yeah, right.
Just to ease the pain.
Actually, I'd candy out.
Okay, we got everybody here, now we're out, down to the student rep.
All right, good evening, as this is the final meeting before the seniors graduate, I'd like to take the opportunity to update you on what the seniors will be doing over the next few weeks. The seniors' last full day is this Friday, May twenty-first. Seniors will be attending the senior reception at Mount Wantusa on Friday night, and will have access to appetizers, a dessert bar, as well as a skyride. The senior parade will be taking place starting at Shepherd Hill en route to the Heritage School in Charlton on Sunday. Next week, seniors will be attending a number of activities after attending class. The senior barbecue will be on Monday, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship is sealed by literacy breakfast on Tuesday, an outdoor prep rally on Wednesday, and senior breakfast and yearbook distribution on Thursday. The senior prom will be held next Thursday, May twenty-seventh, at Solar Park in Worcester. On Wednesday, June second, seniors will be attending a drive-in concert at the Shepherd Hill parking lot, where student Liam Coleman and his band, The Rail Riders, will perform, and food trucks will be available. On Thursday, June third, seniors will have their graduation rehearsal, and on Friday, June fourth, will be the seniors' last assembly and awards ceremony. The class of twenty-twenty-one will graduate on Sunday, June sixth, at four P M. sharp at the D C U Center. Thank you, everyone, last thing I have for tonight is I want to remind the youth in town who are eligible voters to please consider attending the town meeting next Monday, May twenty-fourth, and vote in the town election on June fourteenth. The last day to register to vote for that is May twenty-fifth. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
Question, is that same announcement going to go out at, at school?
Uh, it should.
Because there'll be more, more students that listen to that at school than watch our selecting.
Yeah, I actually might, that's a good suggestion, I'll probably email Mr. Jeff and see if that can be arranged.
Thank you.
Yeah, because seeing as I'll be at all these things, it's nice to.
And it'll be nice to have some of the youth turn out.
Right.
Whatever few we had, I'm sure left midway through your dissertation.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, the parade, just, the parade last year, the first time I did it, was absolutely fantastic, so.
It was.
Just go out to the road, if you see it go by, it's pretty, it's pretty awesome.
So, is this our student rep's last meeting, is he going to be with us one more time?
That's a good question.
When's your last day of school? Eighteenth?
Friday.
Twenty-first, and then my graduation's June sixth, so.
So, so you're at town meeting?
Yeah, I'll see you at the town meeting.
Town meeting.
Well, if it is his last meeting, Mr. Chair, uh.
He'll be at, he'll be at one more, right? He'll be at one more.
All right, bring him back one more time.
July seventh? Yeah, the seventh is probably my last, and then, June twenty-first, I'm.
Gone.
Hey, I might be too.
Just saying, like it is. Next up, we have, next up, we have adjournment, uh, will someone make a motion as, as.
Mr. Chairman.
Count line ten.
I move that we convene into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declare us, that's for the firefighter.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, roll call. Do we have to do a roll call still?
Yep.
Roll call, we do?
Yep.
Roll call vote?
Joe Marci.
Jay Johnson.
Stephen Sullivan.
Kerry Sigman, you mean.
Not to reconvene, you said, too, right, John?
Oh, not to, not to reconvene in public session.
That's what he said.
I'm backstopping everything tonight.
Yeah, you are.
Sorry. Thank you, everybody, good night.